I just get. Members of the public who wish to provide live comments will need to register in advance and use the Zoom meeting platform. All participants will be muted upon entering the meeting. To speak, quick raise your hand indicator. And you'll be called on by the host of the meeting during the public comment section. Please find the information using the link that I gave above. Members of the public who wish to view the meeting but are not participating can view a live stream on the City of Norwalk YouTube channel. The stream is delayed by about 20 seconds. Please find the information using the link that has been provided. The meeting recording in minutes will be posted on the City of Norwalk website within seven days after the meeting. Members of the public who wish to provide public comment are encouraged to submit those via email in advance of the meeting. We have, by the way, received several. For those comments to be read into the record, they should be submitted at least four hours in advance of the meeting start time to teamaldenato@norwalkct.org. Alright, since we, Chris, unmute yourself. Glad to see you.
Hello, how's everyone? Sorry about that.
Okay, we have a five-member board. Let me take a second. Back up here a little bit. So with us tonight are myself, Keith Lyon, Marilyn Altman.
Would you prefer?
And I make sure that I don't miss anybody. Chris Calvades. And we have a new member who is an alternate and is sitting in tonight. It was one of our five members who's hearing cases this evening and appeals. And hearing variants requests. His name's Tom Farkas. He's got a blue shirt on. He's wearing glasses and he's going to wave hi, I think. Hello, Tom. Welcome aboard. So with that, knowing what the board is and having read the initial requirements, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. I just did the roll call. And public hearings, I'll read since we don't have our secretary with us tonight. Tammy will probably jump in if we have a lot of additional reading because I'm a little out of it, having taken some medicine for a fall. The first item up is twenty-two dash oh one twenty dash oh three. Twenty-two Loudens Avenue LLC. Variance to allow decrease in minimum lot width required for proposed lot A, the property located at twenty-two Loudens Avenue. If the applicant is with us, we're ready to hear you.
Chairman, Chris Russo with Russo and Rizio LLC, offices at ten Saskatoon Hill Road in Fairfield. Here on behalf of the applicant, tonight, we're actually requesting a continuance of this hearing. I had a meeting with a number of neighbors out at the site and got a lot of feedback from them. And one of the things that that a few of them had requested was to see architecturals of the dwellings that would go there so they could understand what it would look like. And I was hoping that we would have it ahead of this hearing, have those completed. But we don't. So and I had said to those neighbors that I would come back to them and show them that before proceeding. So have to request a or respectfully request a continuance to the next hearing, which will hopefully give us time to finish those and meet with the neighbors again to go over it with them.
Yeah, hold, hold, hold one second. Tammy, we've had one delay and we got room in there for another thirty day delay, roughly.
Yes, we should be fine. Next meeting is March seventeen.
Okay. So if no one on the board objects, I think we should go ahead and grant the continuance.
I second that.
Alright, so all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'm not in favor.
Okay, Mr. Lyons is not in favor. Anyone else not in favor or abstaining?
Okay, the item passes.
Chairman, my not in favor is based on last week's hearing where you pointed out that there was no hardship found at this point. And the staff finding that there is no hardship. So it seems to me that consulting with the neighbors is more of a PR sort of an exercise than it is related to the matter before us, which is whether or not there's a zoning hardship.
Yeah, I agree with you more or less. I haven't heard the case yet, so I can't make that determination.
Agreed.
So until we hear the case, I can't conclude it. But what I had heard so far led me to wonder, and I still wonder. But nevertheless, if they're asking for a continuous, I don't know of any reason not to unless they're running out of time. And I guess Tammy says we're not running out of time. So with that, unless somebody wants to change their vote, the continuance stands. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chris Russo, and we're moving on. Next item up. Twenty-two oh two one seven oh one. Two eight nine Realty Associates LLC, appeal of Z E O zoning enforcement officer, determination of use as motel versus multifamily residence. In the alternative variance for residential density forty unit existing and proposed. Eleven units allowed and recreation area zero square feet existing and proposed to hundred square feet per unit required and variance for required parking forty-one plus spaces existing proposed fifty-two spaces, which were required for business number two zone. The property is located at two eighty-nine Main Avenue. That. Quick switch in paperwork. Tammy, I can handle this one.
Thank you.
Typically, we have a secretary. The secretary reads in the staff report, and I'm going to do that now for two eighty-nine Realty Associates. Appeal of Z E O determination of use as motel versus multifamily residence. In the alternative variance, this is going to sound repetitive, but that's the way it is. Variance of section one eighteen five twenty-two C for residential density forty units existing and proposed. Eleven units allowed and recreation area zero square feet existing and propose. Two hundred square feet per unit required and variance of section one eighteen one two two zero C C three A for required parking forty-one plus minus spaces existing proposed. Fifty-two spaces required in a business two zone. Property is located at two eighty-nine Main Avenue, District Five, Block Forty-seven, Lot Twelve. And the applicant is appealing the Z E O determination that the allowed use for this property is hotel. If the appeal is denied by the board, the applicant then seeks multiple variances to legally classify the use as multifamily residence. Multifamily is used is allowed in the zone, but the density, recreation area and parking requirements are not met for forty units. Multifamily residential standards are more demanding than hotel use. The background is quite substantial. Nineteen eighty-three staff memo to Z B A is noted. The subject property is apparently suffering through an identity crisis. This crisis persists. The structure was built in nineteen seventy-seven and zoning certificate of occupancy issued in nineteen seventy-eight for motel. The variance application was made in nineteen eighty-three, which sought only to vary the definition of hotel to allow the addition of kitchens within each unit rather than a reclassification of use. At that time, staff noted it was a path of least resistance. You know, they those kind of statements don't matter to me, by the way. A recent request by third-party updated certificate of zoning compliance brought this identity crisis up again. The staff determined the use as hotel based on the two thousand and five updated certificate of zoning compliance, which states forty-unit hotel. And the nineteen eighty-three variance request was of section one eighteen one hundred definition of hotel. While historical discourse does include reference to apartments, there was and has not been until now an attempt to reclassify the use through the zoning department. Staff does recognize as the practical difficulties in restoring the allowed use to hotel today. Therefore, staff does recommend that the variance request be granted to allow multifamily residential use. And do we have the applicant available or the attorney for the? Who is going to be speaking for the applicant, Tammy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I will be representing the applicant this evening. For the record, my name is Liz Suchi. I'm a partner at the law firm of Carmody, Torrance, Sandac and Hennessy. Our office is at ten fifty-five Washington Boulevard in Stanford. Also participating this evening is Robert Yaffa and David Wagman. They are principals in the applicant, appellant and property owner two eighty-nine Realty Associates LLC. Before we start, I would like to acknowledge the services of former board members Greg Brashir and Tad Diesel, who were always well-prepared, attentive and thoughtful in their participation and deliberation. It was a pleasure to be before them, as it is with all of you. And I also welcome to the board Mr. Farkas, and I hope your time on the Z B A is interesting and that you two will have a long tenure before the Z B A. A matter of housekeeping, neighbors were notified of tonight's hearing by certified mail return receipt requested on February third, along with regular mail. And those green domestic return receipt cards were delivered to staff today and should be a part of the permanent record and in the staff's file. As indicated in the memo that Mr. Chairman Conroy just read, the appellant applicant owner is two eighty-nine Realty Associates LLC and has owned the property since two thousand and five. The property is at two eighty-nine Main Avenue, District Five, Block Forty-seven, Lot Twelve. Tammy, would it be okay if you could screen share one of the photos that I had forwarded to you? If you would.
Michelle, are you on that?
Y'all could do that?
Yes, I'm on it. Thank you.
While she's doing that, I'll just give you some information as to location. The property is just north of the Sitco Station on Main Ave. There's the Sitco Station. The building to the right is the property and building that is the subject of this application. If you could share one more, that would be great. Terrific. That's a head-on shot from directly across the street. The property is bounded by to the east by Main Avenue. Across the street is the Miss Laura Raymond Homes, which is a fifty-unit senior residence to the north of Miss Raymond, Miss Laura Raymond Homes. And across the street from the subject property is Cochrane condominiums, and that is a twenty-nine unit condominium complex. To the right of the photo that's before you, you'll see a green building that is a mixed-use, multi-story building on the first floor has retail and spread over the second and third floors are fifteen residential units. And as I mentioned, to the south of the side is the Sitco Station and directly to the west of the property is the Metro North Danbury Branch Railroad Line. The property itself is just under a half acre, zero point four two acres. It is zoned business two. It is improved with that three-story multi, three-story multi-unit structure comprising twenty thousand five hundred square feet constructed in nineteen seventy-seven. The owners also have a lease with the Department of Transportation for some land at the rear of the property, the western section of the property, where some parking and landscaping are located. For more than thirty-five years, this property has been a multifamily apartment. I've lived in this area in Norwalk for, I lived in Norwalk for approximately fifteen years. And for the past twenty-five years, I've lived up the road in Wilton, and I travel in front of this structure nearly every day. And for all the time that I've been in Norwalk and Wilton, which is approximately thirty-five years, I've known nothing else than this being an apartment building. Two eighty-nine Realty purchased the property with the understanding that it was an apartment building as discussed in the Z B A application nineteen ninety-eighty-three, specifically the minutes of the meeting in which the members talked about this as an apartment, their resolution which classified it as an apartment, and also the certificate of variance which references it as an apartment. Its lender and title company also concluded the same. As indicated in the memo, inquiries by others in the fall of two thousand and twenty-one led the zoning department staff to look at their file and come to the conclusion that its files did not confirm the use as anything other than a motel, despite the notation on the two thousand and five zoning permit and reference to the nineteen eighty-three Z B A application. In light of that, the zoning staff issued a determination in December, written determination, and from that determination, this appeal arose. I just would like to, as a general statement, whether the Z B A, whether you as the Z B A uphold the appeal or you decide not to uphold the appeal or move to consider the variances we've requested in the alternative, nothing would change with respect to this property. The structure would remain the same, the number of units, the parking, how it would look. The forty tenants had a long-term leases would largely still be there. However, if the motel use is the use that this board deems it must be, we have significant issues, not only with financing, insurance, but forty, forty residents, the city of Norwalk, who would very likely be displaced. So we filed the appeal pursuant to section one eighteen fourteen ten A one to contest the determination. And in support of that, we've submitted submitted a numerous number of numerous documents that we believe substantiate or claim that this should be considered an apartment as my clients have always believed it to be and how they've always used it. First, the property has has been occupied and used as an apartment for nearly forty years with no issues. There are no records of any zoning violations, building violations, fire department or health department code issues or decisions that contested that. The forty apartments exist and the forty-one parking spaces exist. As I mentioned before, in nineteen eighty-three, Ms. Maldonado specified that a variance application was applied for, and it did relate to the definition of hotel and how many kitchens could be in these in the units. But however, the the application itself specified this as a multifamily, multifamily dwelling. The discussion by board members and the Z B A's resolution identified it as such. In fact, one Z B A member that some of you may recall, Midge Unger, she went as far as to say, we don't need a motel here and it's more appropriate for apartment use. I understand the staff memo from the nineteen eighties, but the board resolution in nineteen eighty-three identified the use as apartments. And in our opinion, that is controlling and the most substantial evidence that gives rise to this use continuing. Next, the assessors' records from nineteen seventy-two did in fact identify this as a motel, and that was because that was the time when the building was constructed. However, in nineteen eighty-three, the assessors' records note identify this as not only an apartment, but specify the actual number of apartments in the structure, and the same is true for the current tax assessor records. The building department first permit in nineteen seventy-seven, of course, was for a motel. But in nineteen ninety-eight and then again in two thousand, in twenty twenty-one, building permits were secured, which reference work to apartments in the structure, not motel units or hotel units. And there was a zoning permit issued in February of two thousand and twenty-one that references work to be done to an apartment and again, not to a motel unit. The building has been classified as R one, which is multifamily and not R two, which is a hotel or motel use. The fire department has inspected the property in nineteen twenty eighteen and twenty nineteen and classified it as apartment. Their inspections were to apartment eight twenty-three and and thirty-nine. The health department has tenant registrations going back to at least twenty fourteen. And in twenty nineteen, my clients commenced a tax appeal challenging the assessment of the property and response to interrogatories served upon them by the law department. They identified the use in response to questions seven and fourteen that this is an apartment. And those interrogatories were also provided to you as some of the documentation that we have submitted. All of these, I think all of these factors and documentary evidence substantiate the fact and are substantial evidence to suggest that this structure has been an apartment building for at least thirty-five years. And I think the my clients have certainly relied upon the various approvals that were in the files of the building and the fire department and the assessor's office when they purchased the property and through today. They've paid taxes on this property as an apartment. They've maintained it as an apartment and have it have been renting it as an apartment ever since their ownership. And also in the owners prior to them did the same. So to that end, we believe that this is the evidence is substantial from various various city agencies that substantiate the use as an apartment and not a motel. To require it to be converted back to a motel, which I can, I cannot remember or or at all that a time when this was a motel, to require it to be converted back to that use and negate various approvals, permits and actions by other municipal departments would result in a substantial loss and displacement of forty tenants. I think there is some degree of a reasonable application of the doctrine of municipal estoppel may also apply since barring the the requirement that this be converted back to motel, since the reliance my clients have placed on documents that have been issued by other departments. Should you decide to deny the appeal, in the alternative, we have sought variances for residential density, parking and recreation area to allow the forty units to to maintain to be maintained as they are. I don't know if you would like to at this point hear that portion of our presentation, take comments, ask questions or hear from the public simply on the appeal and then move forward if you decide that the appeal is not to be upheld, or if you would like us to move forward directly into our presentation on the variances that would be sought to maintain this as a forty-unit apartment. So whatever your pleasure is, we would be happy to accommodate that. Any thoughts?
Andy, you're muted. Need to unmute.
I'm happy to do what the board members would choose to do. If we were to discuss the additional variances to be granted to make it a residential property, I don't know that I want to do that tonight. And I also would want to do a little conferring and make sure we had the knowledge needed to discuss it intelligently. What I do know is that some some benefit may have must have accrued to the former owners to have it treated as a motel. And otherwise, that wouldn't have happened. Today, the board members have a comment that they want to make. Keith? You're muted again.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I have the same inclination, and that is that we should go ahead on the application for the variance.
That's fine. I'd be happy. I'm sorry, Mr. Lyon. I apologize for interrupting.
Alright, no, no, I'm only the second one out of the five of us. I mean, others should say something.
Yeah, I don't know that we're ready to do it tonight, however. Do we have time to push this off one month, Tammy?
Did we lose Tom?
I'm here.
Oh, okay.
I would hear that variance argument, presentation. If others wanted to.
It is my understanding, am I correct in understanding this, that from the get-go, this structure went up in nineteen seventy-seven and was cast as a hotel? And what was it? It also mentioned that it was easier to get permits to construct a hotel than it was to to construct a multifamily or apartment building? Is that how this all started?
No, not quite. It was, for whatever reason, the prior owners decided to build a motel on this site. I have no, no information as to why that was their decision. What ended up happening is after it was constructed in nineteen seventy-seven, nineteen seventy-eight, at some point after that time, it became used as an apartment building. And it was prior to my client's purchase of the property in two thousand and five. So sometime after nineteen seventy-seven until about nineteen eighty-three, thereabout, it after nineteen eighty-three, it became an apartment building. And it had been an apartment building, I should say, at the time of the variance application was decided by your predecessors in nineteen eighty-three, since that was the part of the discussion in the minutes that are part of this application in which they recognized that it didn't really make a lot of sense for it to be a motel and their deliberation and their resolution and the certificate specify it as as having apartments. And after that time, it had always been an apartment building with tenants with leases. It had never been in a motel since that time. So it's almost thirty-five years that it had not been a motel. That's why we're before you. I think my clients were just as perplexed as others when they were told that, well, there are no records that in the zoning office that show this as an apartment building when that's what they purchased. And that's the documentation that that they have supported that from various other departments. And also they relied upon the the information in the nineteen eighty-three variance application, including the deliberation by those members and the resolution and the certificate that identify it as having apartments and not having motel rooms. That's kind of where we are. But if if you would like me to to present the second step or the variances and all that, the alternative, I'm happy to do that. It won't take an inordinate amount of time. And I'm happy to go right into that right now. And then whatever your pleasure is to act on the appeal, whatever that decision is, and if you have to then take up the variance, which you've done in the past, having an appeal and variances and all the alternative, I'm certain that you can address that this evening. So if you'd like me to move forward, I'm happy to do so.
I just have a question, Liz. When when this property changed hands in two thousand and five, was it a mortgage property? Was there documents presented to the underwriter to identify this particular structure? Do you know?
I I believe there was, but perhaps my client, either Mr. Yaffa or Mr. Wagman, could respond to that directly thereon. So perhaps, Robert, could you respond to that?
Yes, thank you. Thank you. And I'll let Dave chime in if he needs to. Absolutely. It was presented to us as an apartment building. Hundred percent. And documents, the documents that Liz referred to supported it as an apartment building. And our our lenders, our title company, all agreed that it was an apartment building.
Okay, I mean, sometimes progression of hotels is just suppositions, possession, progressions of hotels go from hotels to efficiencies and then probably easier than to morph into an apartment situation. And I'm just trying to get it because it seems like there are many, many years and it seems like the ball has rolled through a lot of legs to get to the wall. And a lot of oversight was either either checked and maybe not gone back to the original source. And by that time, maybe the horse is already out of the barn and was it looked like and spelled like a an apartment building.
When my clients purchased, the conditions that exist today were the conditions that existed when they bought it. They didn't make changes to make into forty individual apartments. That's how it existed when they purchased. At some point, things did change. You're absolutely right, Commissioner Farkas, and that's why we're here. So either we're seeking a support for our appeal of the the decision rendered by the zoning enforcement officer or the variances are really rather simple. The property can't accommodate more parking. There is no space to accommodate recreation area. And the number of units just are the number of units. It cannot meet the residential density, which I might add. The type of density that would be allowed today came into effect in nineteen eighty-eight, years after this became an apartment. So the the fact that the it has been this way for so long that we would displace forty, a good portion of the tenants, not all forty, but to 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 make this into a structure that would meet the requirements today would be an undue burden, an unnecessary hardship, which is the standard that you must apply. And in and if you do, it wouldn't create any issues in the neighborhood. There's residential across the street. There's residential residential right next door, all multifamily. The building would not change. The number of parking spaces would not change. And since there hasn't been any issues with this site with neighbors parking and other parking lots or on certainly not on Main Avenue, I would I would submit to you that the conditions will be exactly the same tomorrow if you decide to either uphold the appeal or grant variances as they are today. Nothing is changing other than the proper classification of this property, which probably should have been done after the variance was granted in nineteen eighty-three. So that's that's really the long and short and like.
And these folks were in for one year, two-year, three-year leases. There's relatively no revolving door here. People coming in for weeks at a time and they're leaving and so it would look more like an apartment building than a hotel. So it would look more like a an apartment building than a hotel.
Exactly. Their leases vary. Some is some lease, some are month to month, but have been there for years. Others have year long leases, but it's. It's not a a weekly rental situation. These are residents who've been there for a period of time, who continue to be there for a period of time. And depending upon what the outcome is here, whether you decide to uphold the appeal or if you decide to go the route of variances. What exists today will exist tomorrow. There won't be a change. Um, and I I just think it's a circumstance that for whatever reason needs to be corrected with one through one avenue or the other.
Thank you.
Question for Tommy, and that is what occasioned the inspection?
So an inspection wasn't done, a third party sought an updated certificate of zoning compliance.
Yeah, I see that.
Had that not happened, Mr. Lion, uh, we wouldn't be here. It was a related third party. And much to our chagrin and surprise, we're finding ourselves where we are. Uh, but had that not happened, I'm I'm sure this apartment building would have continued to go on its merry way. And no one would have thought anything else of what that structure is other than an apartment.
Yeah, now we have had instances where folks have presented uh. A change of ownership and sometimes a change of use of buildings that are basically apartments. And have told us they can't make a change and therefore can't come further into compliance with the zoning regulations. And typically we take a good hard look at that and sometimes it requires the change anyway. Um, and they can, they can and do accommodate it. So I am not comfortable at this point in time that we are looking at this. I mean, it was a matter of non-compliance and you you were tagged by the zoning enforcement officer. And so you're here now saying, you know, we want to appeal the decision. Well, if that appeal um, is uh. If your appeal of it is upheld and you want to move then into the variances. I think we need to examine that pretty thoroughly before we get go down that happy road. And I I don't comfortable that we have the information that we need. So maybe we should hold this up for a month and get that information. Because I do think you make some sense that is really not a motel.
It, do you have anything in mind, Commissioner Conroy, of what other information you might like us to provide?
You know, I'm gonna be utterly utterly, I'm gonna be utterly honest. If I had it in mind, I proceed right now.
That might help you um, or that we could further investigate.
I just want it, yeah, well, there's always requirements within any type of uh, residential structure. That certain things be provided, the tenants they're in. And I want to see what those things are. Now, more than likely because of this hotel motel apartment issue. Some things weren't provided and are not present. And I want to know. What we could do reasonably, not unreasonably, but reasonably to require things to be there that may not be there now. But anyway, that's not something that I can pursue right this second, because I don't know that we have. Touched on the expertise. We need to just know what the exact zoning requirements are. And we can't ask you, you're the applicant.
May maybe I, maybe I'm I'm being a little dense tonight. Um, I I'm trying to understand what else you might need to know. Would it be? Information on what each unit, how each unit is constituted, it has a bedroom, a bathroom, a kitchen. Is that?
That's part of it. That's part of it. But the other part of it is uh, what recreation requirement is required to be there. Uh, you know, we've had at least two instances where it said it couldn't be provided and then ended up being provided. Um, we get into parking issues and it has to do sometimes with redrawing the parking lot. To try to move more toward compliance. So yes, I want to examine those issues and I want the zoning department to to give us some feed. As to what they think is required and what are the possibilities. And then, of course, you, the applicant, would do the same. And we could reach a decision. Um, really don't want you representing the zoning department.
Oh, of course. I'm just trying to get in better understanding as to how we can. Address the questions you have from from the documents we have or what we could do to answer your questions.
And there's that old phrase, I don't know what I don't know. So I.
Just going back to what was um, what I thought was the question um. From Ms. Sachi, which was, would we like to, can, I thought it was, would we like to consider the appeal? As it stands, uh, if we um, if we, if we grant the variance, then that's it. If we don't grant the variance, uh, she still has the opportunity for her client to come back and present. The uh, the various other alternatives. Is that the question? Is that what you put forward initially?
Well, that's our, that's our own question. That isn't her question. Our question is, because we have to treat any appeals separately from variance requests. You remember that from past issues where we've had these. So we would deal with the appeal. This seems to me that we're very likely. To grant the appeal. I don't know that we are, but it seems very likely to me that we are. If that's the case, then we would be dealing with the variances. I don't know that we're prepared to deal with the variance requests.
Liz, you're on mute, you're on mute, Liz.
I'm sorry. If you were to grant, if you were to uphold the appeal, you would not have to move into the variances. Because the appeal would, there would be no reason to to then look to the variances which were suggested, should you deny the appeal?
Yeah, I used the wrong terminology. I meant the what we were considering is should we uphold, should we consider upholding the appeal? Or should we look at the various variances that would need to be considered if we did not hold the appeal?
I I think you can hear the presentation for the variance application and then make a decision about how you want to vote tonight, if you even want to vote tonight. On the appeal or the variance request.
Tammy, Tammy, aren't we required to deal with the appeal separately?
Yes.
And deal with it first.
Yes.
So I know the preference I was expect is was um, expressing was to just look at the appeal. If the appeal is not upheld, um, I think what Andy was saying was initially. He would want to look at the variances as a sep- on a separate occasion next month. Did I understand that correctly?
You you did understand it correctly and part of the issue for me is how we are required by statute to deal with.
Aren't they both connected? I mean, you know, if you kind of. Information that maybe she's gonna furnish, uh, and I know that certainly they would have to. Uh, augment recreation and parking spots and 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 things like that. And so I I would almost not just hear that argument or at least that presentation, not vote per se on that. But just to know what they have in mind, because it seems like it's a very, very finite piece of property and it'd be very imaginative. To meet the zoning requirements as required presently.
Yeah, yeah, I I know that we can't treat it in parallel. We have to deal with it serially. And then the very first decision we have to make is whether or not to grant the appeal.
Well, if if I may interject, it's it, if if it is um, beneficial for you, Mr. Chair and other members. Um, to have more information, whether that come from staff or from us. Uh, now that we hear a little bit that you you'd like some additional, whatever that is, and we can come up with what we think that is and perhaps staff. Uh, may have some additional information or whatever, that if you want us to come back next month. Um, you do have to deal with the appeal first. And whatever your decision is on that will determine whether or not you move. To consider variances that have been requested. And those variances would be to keep this structure as a forty unit apartment, but vary the regulations for recreational. Uh, recreation area, parking, which the there is no availability to place one other parking space. That's the reason, one of the reasons why they have to lease space from the state of Connecticut. And the residential density, which will not change unless my clients are then obligated to reduce the number of units. And that's not what the variance request uh, is before you, to reduce the number of units. We've asked for variances to keep the number of units. And those variances relate to density, recreation area and parking. But if you are, uh, if you would like more information, whatever that is from us, we, I'm sure we would be happy to. To seek out whatever we can and provide that to staff. And in the meantime, perhaps staff may have additional ideas, suggestions or. Um, other information that may help you in in coming to whatever decision you want to come to, and we could come back to you next month.
That'd be good, I think.
Right? If you're uncomfortable right now, I don't want you to make a decision when you 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 don't have this this sense of um, completeness that perhaps you need.
True. So Tammy, were you prepared to make a case tonight, uh, supporting um?
Defending the city's position, yes. So what I, what I had said was, what I, what I thought, I thought, I mean, maybe I'm just. Missing a point here. I thought we were gonna maybe go ahead and hear the presentation for the variance, not 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 vote on either at this point. Am I wrong about that or?
Yeah, well, you kind of are, because we we are required to deal with the appeal first, period.
Okay, so I thought, I thought Liz had offered to make the presentation for the variance, but that was just.
She'd offered to do that, but I don't think we can. I think we have to deal with the appeal. And then once we make our mind up about the appeal, uh, she's more than willing to make a case, should it be necessary. That certain variances be granted. Should it be necessary? So I didn't know whether the department, if you're dealing with the appeal, forget the variances. If you're dealing with the appeal, wants to make a strong case tonight that the. The zoning enforcement decision should stand and the appeal should be denied. Are you ready to do that?
I I don't think I'll be any more ready next month.
Okay, well, I think we should deal with that and deal forward, but the variance piece of this, if it should be necessary to deal with. I think should wait till next month and we should deal, you know, get it, get into it and go through it in great detail and make sure that we get it right.
Okay.
Well, if if I may interject, I think then it it might be better if we do all of this in one night next month. Um, because there may be more information, whether it's information that we managed to uncover or staff uncovers. That may uh, lend itself to a a different to certain determination on the appeal, whether for the pro or con, I don't know.
Yeah, staff is willing to do that as well. Yeah.
All right, so if the applicant is willing, and if you're willing, Tammy, then I think we could put it off for one month. Um, in the meantime, there's something that needs to transpire during that month. Um, I think our zoning staff needs to dig into this in depth. And then let the applicant know what their ideas are, if they have issues, what those issues are. And then the applicant can then address them and then we will be prepared, completely compared, prepared next month. And I think we'll be compared, we'll just be.
Okay.
But that's okay. Anybody uh, want to fight the battle that we should do this all in great depth tonight?
No. Aren't, aren't we just kicking the can down the road? I mean. I I, in my opinion, this should get approved. I think it's pretty clear in nineteen eighty three that the intent was that it was apartments. Um, and I don't think there's gonna be much information from what I hear uh, presented in the month. So I I'm ready to vote on this today, but if the other four board members are not comfortable, I guess we'll, we'll do it next month.
Yeah, uh, well, I think if you, if you, if it's to have been an apartment, uh, that raises a whole bunch of questions, but. Uh, and the zoning folks should be able to comment on them in detail. Now, it's not up to the zoning board of appeals to have that information uniquely unto ourselves. We get it from the zoning staff.
Um, I'm fearful I'm losing the plot here. I'm with Chris. I would be prepared to uh, consider the appeal tonight. But we would have, am I correct in thinking that Tammy would need to present um?
If necessary.
Point of view. On the other hand, I'm very mindful that you started this, Andy, by saying you uh, didn't have uh, the appetite for a lengthy session tonight. So in deference to that point, I I can postpone till next month.
Well, I think Liz was thinking if we're gonna, if for chance, we move into a big discussion about variances um. And she thinking maybe she'd want to have both the appealed decision and the discussion of variances done next time around. Um, if Tammy is ready to go tonight and wants to, you know, support the zoning enforcement officer's decision. Uh, I can go that way. It depends on what you guys want to do. Uh, I do not really want to get into the variances tonight, because I don't think we have enough analysis and. Uh, to determine it. And we've done this a few times and we've gotten burned a few times, because we're in such a big hurry and I don't want to do that. So should, shall we wait a month or not?
Uh, the the last thing that I would want from my clients would be for you to consider something that any number of you are are somewhat. Um, unsure based upon whatever we've provided and that there may be some additional information that you would need to help render your decision. Um, there won't be that much more that I would suspect that we could uncover. Uh, as to the history of this parcel, I think the staff has done an excellent job trying to do that. And I think we've all collectively. Uh, come, tried to come to that point. But the worst thing would be, as you said, to to rush into a decision if you're not ready. If you're uncomfortable, uh, if we need to um, provide you with, uh, I'm I'm just, I'm just speaking out loud. A floor plan of what each of these units looks like, so that you can see that they are really apartment units and not something else. Um, I'm sure we can do that. If one of the questions I think from Mr. Lion, excuse me, from Mr. Farkas may have been. Um, when the properties were were, when the property was purchased, uh, was there information um, provided? And determinations made by the lender or title companies? Um, you think that's, if that's information that would help you guide your decision. And we can get that to you. I can't imagine that Mr. Yaffa or Mr. Wagman who are on the line would uh, would contest that. Um, Robert and David, you can let me know. But I think it, an informed decision is certainly better than a rushed decision. And we certainly don't want to put you in that position that you find yourself um, either unable to make a decision or make a decision that you're not comfortable with. Or with, comfortable with because you haven't been provided with enough information. We'll do what we can on our end to provide you with more. And next month, you've heard the basis, you've heard the, the, the.
You know, in the record, um, in the record, there's some discussion about kitchenettes and kitchens. And how many units could have them and could not have them and how you, if you made it a motel, you could continue on. And if you didn't, you know. Those kinds of things need to be examined in depth by the staff and over the years. Certain things have happened, um, and can they be allowed to continue to happen? Be my question, obviously. Along with some other things where you need the variances, because if it was being considered a motel and actually hasn't been treated as a hotel. How do we look at the variance request? So those are the common sense approach, I think, to where you want to go. And it may not even be necessary. Depends how we handle the appeal. So if we were to wait till next month, the very first thing we would do is deal with the appeal separately. And if needed, then deal with the variance side of things.
That's fine. I don't think my clients are, have any objection to that. Uh, we, we want you to have what you need to have in order to make an informed decision. And if you don't have that right now, then it's appropriate to postpone.
Well, some of the members would like to continue. I would like to see us uh, wait a month. And if you can accommodate waiting a month, that would be terrific. And Tammy, uh, we could get into depth in what the variance requirements are, right?
Yeah, we'll give you some additional information, sure.
Yeah, good. So can we do this? Can we delay a month and uh, then deal with the appeal directly? And if necessary, after that, deal with the variance requests.
Um, I'm saying yes, I would just like Mr. Yaffa and Mr. Wagman hopefully to to nod in assent.
I don't have him on my screen. I have Mr. Yaffa on my.
Yes, they're nodding, nodding and consenting to the the one month.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so board, can we go ahead since the applicant is willing, uh, and push this off one month?
I would second that.
Yeah, I'll second that.
All right, it's all in favor, I.
I.
I, all right, anybody against any objection? All right, it it is done.
We will see you next month.
Yes, and Tammy uh, is going to get to you with any questions that we may have raised. In the meantime, looking at the documentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
But. Next up. Let me entertain you. I think it's the extension request.
That's correct.
You all probably, most of you anyway, remember four ninety Westport Avenue, um, they had a variance and. They have requested an extension of time. they have requested an extension of time. Grab that. Twenty-one oh two eighteen oh one. Sac at Norwalk four ninety LLC variance for setbacks, building area, open space, bumper strip for two outdoor paddle courts in business two zone, property located at four ninety Westport Avenue, District five, block eight, lot forty-one. The request applicant is requesting an additional six month extension of time in which to obtain building permits for the above referenced variance. The zoning board of appeals approved the project on March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. An effective date of March twenty-six, two thousand twenty-one. Building permits were to be secured by September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one. An extension of time was granted in August, two thousand twenty-one, which meant building permits were to be obtained by March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. If the additional six month extension of time is granted, building permits must then be obtained by September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Anybody that wanted to chime in on this one, you know that I voted against it, so I'm probably not the first person that should be talking about. Any thoughts? We aren't talking building big buildings here. We're talking crack about course.
I'm I'm okay with the extension, so. I don't know. How everyone else feels.
Anybody else want to weigh in?
I'm I'm new, so I'm unfamiliar with the initial arguments here, but.
So we had some issues way, 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 way back where the ZBA routinely granted extension requests. Then we also had a problem of people showing up for meetings. We had a big sit down and discussion about those two or three issues. And one of the things that was decided is that we would be much tougher on granting requests in the future. Covid has made us not abide by that toughness decision because it seems unfair during Covid to try to hold people to that higher standard. It's really tough to get things done during Covid.
Well, I'd like to second that because I'm not.
Anyway.
Only with this. I'll second that.
Mr. Chairman, I'm my name's Jay Klein. I'm a attorney with Carmody Law. I represent the property owner. Would it be okay for me to speak briefly for those commissioners who might not be familiar with the with with the project and and the Covid situation and extensions that you that you just referenced or?
Yeah, I I just will let you know, though, because of the Covid thing, I would probably vote to grant the extension myself, even though I, in general, I'm I'm not very positive about granting extensions. Covid is created a unique situation. Go ahead.
Yes, yes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, again, Jay Klein, like Liz, a partner at Carmody Law, I'll I'll say briefly. If you can't hear me, let me know. I'm trying to be, I've got a ten month old asleep in the room above me, so I'm trying to be a little quiet, but if I need to be louder, let me know. Okay. We represented the owners of this property, which really one of the more uniquely unique lot shape, unique zoning history that led to the granting of variances to allow for the construction of a of a paddle court behind the existing building that's located on the site. And our extent, the reason for our extension is is really what Chairman Conroy alluded to. Covid is, you know, not been kind to to any of us. That's probably an understatement. And for this project, you know, they've been no exception. But, you know, but supply chain issues, getting contractors on board and just being in a position to, you know, get it all done has has just been a challenge in light of everything going on. You know, we're fortunate, not just us, the property owner, but the Norwalk community, other communities across the state. You know, we we understand this is a time where we want to, you know, lift each other up, help out small businesses in in this unique set of circumstances, hopefully. In six months, not only will we have our building permit, but, you know, all of our lives, you know, perhaps we won't be in Zoom meetings anymore, you know. Hopefully, everything will be in a much better place. But but we are just unable to pull a permit and and get going by March at at this point in time. And your extension will really help intensity fitness, which is a, you know, a a good business citizen of the Norwalk community, help them get to where they need to be to provide this outdoor court to to the community.
Anybody else have any question for the attorney?
No, I'm ready to vote.
Yeah, so my, anybody else want not to vote yet? I'm all set. Okay, so all in favor of granting the extension, I take it that we have a motion from Mr. Gavaleez and I second it.
In favor.
Favor.
Anybody against? Anybody abstaining? All right, it's granted.
Thank you so much, everyone. Have a good evening.
Yeah, you too. Bye bye.
Thank you.
Tammy, my friend.
Yes, we doing minutes?
Yeah, well, we got it should do minutes. I'll let you carry the ball on the minutes. I buried him somewhere. I don't.
Yeah. I mean, I think normally you guys just say if you saw anything that needs to be corrected.
Does anybody have a correction?
I did not have any corrections.
Oh, look good. Do we have a motion to?
Well, we don't because we should make sure that we got our ducks in order to deal with the motel hotel long stay slash apartment house and.
No, sorry, I meant a motion for the minutes. That's all, not not motion to adjourn.
Yeah, okay. We we did that. Don't we have a motion for the minutes?
I don't think so.
I'll make.
I'll make the motion. Anybody second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
All right, anybody against any assertions? Okay, good. Tom, you should probably abstain because I don't know, hey, it could have been.
Yeah, yeah, it won't pass me.
Yeah, if you have any questions surrounding that, I went through the material pretty thoroughly. And I had a whole bunch of questions. And we have had those instances where we've had presentations from someone representing a property owner saying, well, I can't make a single change. It's impossible to do so. And we required to change anyway. And the changes were made, so I I don't take that as gospel just because a representative for a client says, I can't make a single change. You live with it. That's the way it is. That's not necessarily the outcome we want to have. It may be the right outcome. And that would be the decision we get to, but we don't even have to deal with unless we turn, you know, we turn down the appeal.
Yeah, I'll make sure I'm going to double check with corporation counsel, make sure we're looking, you know, tackling this.
That would be really, really, really helpful.
Yeah.
Because this this does get to be a quagmire, and it is legal. Each time this has come up, it's been a legal quagmire, which has been really tough.
You mean for use use situations like this, you mean?
Well, it's it it's just fraught with problems from one little problem here, one little problem there, and is it the layout and are that they really is, do they meet the fire code? And well, do they or don't they? And, you know, has everything been rectified that was a problem? And really, can they be an apartment house now? Or are they so far out of bounds that they should not have been ever an apartment house? So those are the kinds of things that need to be thought about, and they need to be thought about that by the city staff as opposed to the board kind of pulling it out of thin air.
Right, yeah. I don't want to speak too much about my my position and my information without without having their representation present, but we'll certainly I'll get together with their counsel and and our counsel and we'll figure.
So if everything's comsetic, that's fine. But if there are irregularities or things that really should be looked at more closely, particularly fire safety code, you name it. If those things exist, we should then tell the applicant that they exist. The board think that that's a good approach?
Well, I I just have a question for Tammy. They've they've presented that there've been no violations. Right? I don't know if that city presented that or.
So there's there's no zoning violations other than the fact now that we're all aware that they're outside of the scope of any zoning compliance certificates. But I think what I don't, again, I I I'm reluctant to to go into too much detail without them having the opportunity to hear the discussion. So that's why I think it's better to defer.
And I agree with you. I have a question because I, where does grandfathering, and I'm just speaking, you know, ideologically, not lawfully, but I mean, does this not fall under some sort of grandfathering? I think the whole thing, because I I spoke to Tammy today, I found the whole thing very murky, like it it was it was stated as a motel was built, you know, under under that title, and then now it's an apartment building. And the murkiness of it. And so now we're here today. And first of all, I mean, I'm people have been, like like you said, there's no, they don't have any siding against the building. I imagine, you know, they're they're fire fire marshals have been there, et cetera.
That's correct.
So my my question is for the board is, I mean, shouldn't this have all been already done? And aren't they just coming to us, you know, I mean, there's the appeal to get the name of what this structure is, one way or the other, correct? Either it's a motel or apartment multifamily? And is that not, I mean, they, it it needs to be, they're asking the appeal is to to have it cited as a multifamily building.
That that is correct. I don't, I don't want to speak over anybody, and I don't want to again, say too much, but I think it's not unfair or unreasonable for me to say within zoning documentation, I don't have anything beyond two thousand and five for a zoning compliance certificate, and that zoning compliance certificate states hotel.
And did this, I mean, it did this just come up?
Wait a minute, Marilyn, Marilyn, you notice that that's that's that variance from what the attorney said. She said the exact opposite, and I picked up on that. So I think we want to see the documents. Are there other documents that would confirm what the attorney said? Which was that in two thousand and five, it was declared to be an apartment house? Because that isn't what I understood the document said.
I think she was referencing the fire marshal.
Need to be conflicting there. You're right. But.
So we need that information. We need to know who the hell was, I thought it all seemed to hinge on back then, not now. Back then, seemed to hinge on kitchens and kitchenettes and how many you could have. And if you wanted to slide by, then you just called it a motel. And so that's why I asked, was there an owner that benefited from the designation of motel? And I don't know. But our attorney should be the one that's helping us figure this out. And grandfathering comes into play to answer your question. When there's a change in zoning regulations that says that you can't have something the size you have it, that let's say it had to be bigger, that you needed a a recreation area and the recreation area at a minimum had to be X. And if those regulations came into effect after you own the property and you were in compliance prior to those new regulations, then your grandfather. You don't have to do the new. So that's that's a strict meaning of grandfather. I don't know that we can play around when grandfathering when it comes to fire marshals.
So that documentation, the exhibits that the attorney supplied to everyone does have the most recent certificate of zoning compliance, which was from two thousand and five. She is referencing also certificate of occupancy issued by the building department. And then let's see, I thought there was something from the fire marshal, but I mean, there's like forty pages here, so I'm not sure, but we'll we'll highlight and clarify, maybe I'll speak with the counsel and try to get her maybe to.
Well, the pivotal decision of kitchenettes or not kitchenettes and how many? I think that needs to be really nailed down.
Yeah, well, I, well, I don't, I mean, I think it's clear that they did agree to add all the kitchenettes in the units but per the variance, but that was, yeah. Yeah, we probably, we'll discuss it more next.
Yeah, yeah, we can't discuss it now in depth and come to any decision. But where there's murky areas that Marilyn referred to, that we should pin that information down is the the who, what, when, where. I know that further we go back in the record, the less precise the record is. But, you know, let's do the best we can here. And then make sure we provide that to the applicant and get anything additional from the applicant.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I mean, and to be clear, every, all the documentations they have are are much of that came from our office. We are we're always upfront and provide that information.
Okay.
Any records that we have.
Terrific. Is everybody healthy and well?
So far.
Thank you.
That's that's good. I I screwed up and had my foot twist on me while I was going down steps out front and managed to land off the side of the steps. So I'm not terribly injured, but my back didn't turn out so good, so I can't sleep. Therefore, I'm sort of half here and half not here. Hopefully, will that all be resolved by the next meeting? And you all have met, Tom, and Tom's a good addition. And we're thrilled to have him aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I haven't met you. Nice to meet you.
Nice meeting you virtually.
So I I did receive communication from Irene Dixon today that the other candidate is going to be heard by the or presented to the common council for appointment next.
That's good. That's good. Did we get a third one or no?
No, not yet.
Okay, we have room for three alternates in case anybody's wondering, and this would make two. And we we have certain things that I wanted to achieve, which was I wanted to see at least one minority, if not two, join us. And I wanted at least two women, if we could have them, join us. And I wanted all three alternate slots filled. We do have a requirement under the state's minority representation law that we had to abide by, and I think we're okay. Tom, are you an independent?
I am an independent, yeah.
That helps us.
Unaffiliated, not even independent.
Terrific. It helps.
All the time.
All right. Well, the one of the things that we couldn't become, we couldn't become all them with the one Republican, that won't work. If you if you look at the minority representation statutes, so we we needed to be careful with that. And the reason you have to be careful is not because we have an issue with it, but because if we get an attorney that comes and says the board's improperly formed, then they can run to Superior Court and say, and any decision we made should be overturned. We need that like we need a hole in the head. As tough as it is, we don't need anything else.
No, I'm unaffiliated. When I vote, when I work at the polls, they can sit me next to anybody.
Okay. Terrific. Anything else, anything we need to know about?
No.
Okay, so they should be back next month and Keith is away next month. So you don't have to deal with this next month, Keith.
Well, I I sort of tipped my hand about next month, so the guy's probably glad I'm away.
It's going to be a whole pocket.
Yeah, so I moved that we adjourn. Any second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
I have a good one, folks.
Everyone.
Feel better, Andy.